There, okay. Oh, look who's here, the legal biggle. My name is Candace Payne. I'm Chair of the Commission. To my left, well, to my left should have been Tom Rolf, but he found something. He's excused from today. Brandy Spangler will be keeping track of everything that goes on here. And Greg McNally is the head of the Planning Department, and he will help us make sure we make the right decisions. To my immediate right is Andy Hunt-Housen, right? Commissioner extraordinaire. And Nico Hash is here to guide us through the legalese of getting this work done. And Roger Balz is the Chief Administrative Officer for our county. Thank you all for being here. Oh, I'm supposed to remind everybody, we have a signup sheet in the front of the bar going across there where we want people's names, contact information. No comments, just your name. Okay. First of all, we have a staff recognition, and I believe it is going to be presented by our friend, Drenda Niemann.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioner Hunt-Housen. My name is Drenda Niemann. I'm the Health Officer at Lewis &amp; Clark Public Health. And I have for you this morning, my distinct honor of presenting a staff recognition. Laurel Reek, after 30 years of service to Lewis &amp; Clark Public Health, is retiring this week. She's had a very distinct career that I would like to share a few highlights with you. She's actually had about 40 total years in her career, 30 of which have been right here in Lewis &amp; Clark. She's had a heartfelt and exquisite career in solid waste management, onsite wastewater inspection, plan reviews, lead education, licensed establishment inspections, program development, staff supervision, and raising up the entire Health Department to a higher level of excellence through accreditation. Although her career as a sanitarian began in California, most of her career has been right here in Lewis &amp; Clark County, tirelessly serving the residents of Montana. As a sanitarian, she always looked for ways to improve. Improve the department and program processes. Improve her approach to operators. Improve interactions with coworkers and the public. Improve protective measures used in licensed establishments. She always seemed to find a way to yes and still keep the public safe from exposures to food and environmental hazards. She worked with operators to overcome tremendous barriers and saw great success with her kind, empathetic, stalwart approach to food code compliance. Laurel's knowledge of epidemiology was a key factor in multiple successful disease outbreak investigations. Her tenacity in solving these mysteries served the public well. Her knowledge and understanding of public health went well beyond the scientific impacts of toxins and bacteria on human health. But she also deeply understood the implications to people's health based on their perceptions of public health. And she worked hard to ensure that those perceptions were positive. As the Licensed Establishment Supervisor, Laurel was instrumental in Lewis &amp; Clark Public Health's participation in the National Retail Food Regulatory Program Standards, which are designed to enhance the services provided by our food establishment inspection program. She has actively participated in the work over the years looking to improve the local program and incorporate the practices of the national program into our team here locally. Understanding that standardizing would lead to program excellence, she persevered through COVID-19 setbacks, budgetary shortfalls, and heavy workloads. She applied for several National Environmental Health Association grants to assist with improving program standards and ensured the next supervisor quickly became standardized when she promoted to the Division Administrator. As a member of the Lewis &amp; Clark Public Health Leadership Team, Laurel dedicated many hours to helping the department accomplish initial accreditation back in 2017, as well as re-accreditation in 2024. Taking the lead on the domains aligned with public health emergency preparedness and utilizing legal and regulatory actions designed to improve and protect the public's health, Laurel brought her expertise and many years of experience to provide evidence of excellence to meet these accreditation standards and measures. Further, she actively participated in the statewide advocacy group working to develop and update the licensed establishment fees, which is being proposed to the legislative session this year. When the Health Department found ourselves in a precarious budgetary situation, Laurel enthusiastically agreed to consolidate the environmental health and water quality programs into a newly formed division that also included disease prevention programs. She skillfully developed a new team and provided reflective mentorship and coaching to our program supervisors and numerous staff across the department. Her division relies on her expertise to work through food and waterborne disease investigations, program evaluations, policy and plan development, and regulation rewrites. She is a spreadsheet queen when it comes to program data analysis and data-driven program enhancements. In her final months with the Health Department, Laurel has painstakingly developed a desk manual to assist in succession and transition upon her departure. She cares deeply for the staff and the programs we offer and wants to ensure consistency and support persist after her retirement. We are so grateful for her commitment to public health and her dedication to protecting the residents of Lewis &amp; Clark County. We wish the very best for Laurel as she transitions into her new adventure, retirement. And I'd like it this time for Laurel to come forward.
Congratulations, Laurel. We appreciate all, and I have seen you in action personally. I know the hard work you have put in, and you have done a good job for the citizens of Lewis &amp; Clark County. To that end, we are going to present you with this lovely little framed. And I'm going to read it, and then I'll come personally hand it to you, and we'll take pictures, and we'll all be proud of you. "This is in honor of your service, Laurel Reek. Retired with distinction after 31 years of service, we wish to express our sincere appreciation and gratitude for your 31 years of dedicated service to Lewis &amp; Clark County and the citizens that we serve. Your commitment to excellence will be remembered for years to come. We wish you happiness and good health in this new chapter of your life. Dated March 4, 2025, on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, the staff of Lewis &amp; Clark County, and your fellow coworkers and friends, thank you and congratulations." Laurel, can I say something, words, comments?
Thank you. I think I'm a little bit speechless. But I just want to say that it has been my privilege to serve this community and to have the, a place for the passion that I have for public health in making sure that things are done in a good, safe way, but in a way that promotes health.
Thank you, Laurel.
Commissioner, can I just make a comment about Laurel? If I could, I never knew you were the spreadsheet queen, but that's a great, I would have been calling you that, gosh, all this time. Laurel, we've known each other for a long time now, since you, I've been here, I guess this is into my 19th year now. And you, over your 40 years of service in, in public health, under the public health umbrella in some way, shape, or form, I think you've done everything but vaccines, probably, unless you've done that too.
Oh, no, they don't want me doing that.
But you've done a lot. Anyway, I just wanted to make one, one comment about the way you do your work. You know, there's this kind of stereotypical view of public health, especially you think about, like, the public health officer coming into a restaurant. Oh, no, the public health guys are here, you know, clean up, kind of attitude. And when you come in, I think, from my understanding and the people, the feedback I've gotten all these years, our businesses and places that have to be reviewed for, for that public health purpose view you as a partner, as a friend, as someone coming to help, coming to make sure that they're doing what they need to do, and not a gotcha type of situation. And I liked what Drenda said about the way your staff and the people that have worked with you view you as a partner and a friend and somebody trying to guide them. And I'm glad that you're lending some effort to leaving this program in good shape, because your leadership and guidance will be missed. And I'm hopeful that the folks that are watching you do your work are learning a good lesson. So just appreciate the way you do your work is what I'm really trying to say. And thank you for all your years of service.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Okay, I think we should give her an understanding. Come on. Good job, Laurel. Let's, uh... Big smiles. Thank you. Oh, Agenda Item Number Three. Not nearly as fun, but important. Roger, do you have a consent action item for us?
Thank you, Chair Payne. This is Item Number Three on the agenda for you today. It's Resolution 2025-16, Declaring County Property, Surplus Property. Staff recommends approval of that item. Thank you, Commissioners.
Don't we have anybody here from? Like Jan Gardner, Carver?
Chair Payne, no, we do not.
Oh, darn. I thought maybe the sheriff would show up. Well, does the Commission have any questions?
No, I didn't.
And is there public comment? Nope, no public comment. Can we have a motion?
Chair Payne, I would move that we approve Consent Action Item 3A as presented.
Second, all in favor of, oop, we gotta have a further comment. Is there any further comment?
No.
Is there any further public comment? What? Nope. Okay. Ask for a vote, all in favor of this motion signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, pass on a two to nothing vote. What is today's date? What's today's date? Fourth? And now, fun begins. Item Number Four on our agenda is bid opening for the 2025 Paint Striping and Audra Zachrell. Hi.
Good morning, Chair Payne, Commissioner. I'm Audra Zachrell, Assistant Director of Public Works. This morning, we are opening bids for the construction of the 2025 Paint Striping Project, which consists of waterborne paint striping on about 36 and a half miles of county roads, three miles of roads for the city of East Helena, and less than one mile for Jefferson County. We received two bids that we will be opening. Okay, this first bid that we have opened is from Highmark Traffic Services Incorporated of Billings, Montana. The bid security has been included. The bid appears to be fully complete. The unit price is $36 per gallon of waterborne paint for a total extended price for all unit price work of $117,504. Okay, this second bid is from Solo Marking LLC of Billings, Montana. The bid security has been included. The bid appears to be fully complete. The unit price per gallon of waterborne paint is $38.50 for a total extended price of $125,664. Staff would like to take these bids under advisement and return in two weeks on Tuesday, March 18, with a recommendation for award.
Thank you, Audra. Do you have any comment there, Mr. Commissioner?
I do not, Madam Chair.
Any questions? A public comment? All right, in that case, I believe we need a motion.
Chair Payne, I'd move that we ask staff to take these bids under advisement and make a recommendation to this Commission on 31825 at a regular scheduled meeting.
Second. We've got a motion and a second. Is there any further comment? Seeing none, let's have a vote, all in favor of the motion. Please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion passes on a vote of two to nothing, and we will see you back here on March 18. Number Five on our agenda is Resolution 2025-17, Setting Seasonal Weight Limits on Specific Roads Under the Jurisdiction of Lewis &amp; Clark County, and will be presented by Mr. Kevin Horn.
Chair Payne, good morning. Commissioner Hunt-Housen, good morning to you as well. For the record, my name is Kevin Horn. Spelling on that is first name Kevin, K-E-V-I-N. Last name is Horn, H-O-R-N-E. I'm the Lewis &amp; Clark County Public Works Operation Manager. Before you today is Resolution 2025-17 for Seasonal Weight Limit Restrictions on Specific Hard Surfaces Roads within the jurisdiction of Lewis &amp; Clark County. This winter, we have experienced unseasonable warm temperatures along with extremely cold temperatures across Lewis &amp; Clark County. Seasonal weight limit restrictions are necessary as the frozen ground begins to thaw. The base gravel in the road becomes saturated and ultimately causes surface breakup and premature failure. The current freeze-thaw cycles we have and will be experiencing will have the potential to cause severe damage to our roads with heavier loaded vehicles. The road's ability to carry fully loaded vehicles is substantially reduced during this time period. Staff has worked to develop this resolution to protect our investment and keep the roads safe and serviceable for the public use for the timeframe annually, beginning each year, March 1, and ending annually each year on May 31. Public notice will be provided via social media, news media, also by fax or email to our current list of contractors and heavy haulers within Lewis &amp; Clark County. Notice of seasonal weight restrictions will also be posted on the Lewis &amp; Clark County website. Staff recommends approval and adoption of Resolution 2025-17 for seasonal weight limit restrictions on specific hard surfaced roads for the timeline established by this resolution and authorize the Chair to sign.
Thank you, Kevin. Do we have any questions from the Commission?
Chair Payne, if I could, please.
Go for it.
Mr. Horn, thanks. Thanks for the greetings as well. You, you mentioned it in your, in your memo, but just for the effort to make sure that those that might be watching or listening understand, this is an annual thing that we do, as you've said. And we, we try to protect our investment. And what often happens, and you can describe this a little further, but what often happens with some of these roads that may get squishy because of the frost and then the warm, and they have potential to break up or have some kind of damage. And so this is just to protect that public investment. So we're really protecting our taxpayers ultimately and, and their investment in these roads. So just speak to, what, what do they mean by heavy loads or these? What kind of vehicles are we talking about on a road that may experience this kind of damage? Just kind of give people a visual, I guess.
Chair Payne, Commissioner Hunt-Housen, great question. SHV, special haul vehicles. Single axle vehicles are probably the toughest. I will use box trucks as an example of ones that deliver furniture and things of that nature, have one rear axle, but they're really long. So weights, vehicle weights are established, what they call how they bridge it out. It's the overall length, how many axles, and what the weight that that truck is carrying. So the singular axled vehicles, we try to prevent the most. That causes the most damage, similar to how our bridges are posted. If you see the different combinations on a bridge sign, you know you'll have a single axle vehicle, a double, and so on. I would also add, Chair Payne and Commissioners, yes, we have done this on an annual basis, year after year after year. If you, if you note in the first, the second paragraph towards the end, these will be annually from here on out, March 1 through May 31. That's when we experience the most breakup. This resolution will stay intact. There's no reason for us to bring that back to the Board unless we modify this resolution, whereas we would add a road, take a road away, you know, one of those. So this will stay intact from here on out, per the dates described in this resolution.
Chair Payne, if I could, so if that's the case, then you'll just annually post, do the media-type awareness campaign, let some of those haulers know through your regular channels each season, I guess. Is that letting them know it's, we're back at restriction time?
Chair Payne, Commissioner Hunt-Housen, that is correct. We'll work with Betsy Kirk, our communications outreach person. They'll be on our website. And then we do have, we do carry that list of people that we do write permits for. So we have a pretty good hired hauler list. So they, they will all be notified as well. And I think once we're on this system, it's typically around this timeframe, March 1 anyways. It might be a little bit before, it might be a little bit after, like we are today, March 4. But it just makes sense for that timeframe to just keep it annually unless there's some kind of change that we need to bring back to the Board for approval.
Great, thank you, Chair Payne. I just wanted to take the opportunity for an education.
I just thought that was fabulous. Thank you, Commissioner Hunt-Housen. And actually, I was going to ask about, are, are you going to have to do this every year? No, you're being efficient. You're going to put those signs up, and this gives you permission until such time as we have to address it again. Hopefully not next year, right?
Chair Payne, that's correct. So once the Board approves this, we'll have signs up right away for all the restricted roads on a seasonal basis. They do, we will take them down on May 31.
Just to help with my understanding, I'm looking at the list that is attached to, to this resolution. And at the top of the line, Jim Town Road Asphalt. And then directly across from it, it says Highway 284 to the end of the asphalt. And at first, I thought maybe that was another, that we had two columns, and these were all separate. Is that, that's, is that correct or not?
Chair Payne, great question. The left-hand side is actually the road name. The next column is an identifier to where it starts and where it ends. So Highway 284, that would of course be Canyon Ferry Road to the end of the asphalt on Jim Town Road. We like to add that, a little bit of an identifier in there, because some roads that are identified might not be fully restricted.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, that did, that clarified that in my fuzzy head. So, thank you, Kevin.
One, one last comment, Chair Payne, Commissioners. If you look at the actual list of roads on the seasonal, you'll, you'll note that some of them, they're within all of our districts, right? So we have a lot of roads in Lincoln. You know, that's in a rural improvement district, of course. So we're also looking out for the interest of our, our special district friends. You'll see some of those in the next resolution too. So it's not just county roads. Some of them are within rural improvement districts as well.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Any further questions? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, we have a motion, please.
Chair Payne, I'd move that we approve Resolution 2025-17 as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve this resolution. All in favor, whoop, we gotta ask, is there any further question? Is there any further public comment? Seeing none, let's have a vote, all in favor of this resolution. Signify by saying aye. Aye.
I said aye.
Okay, I didn't hear you.
We just said it at the same time, Chair.
Okay. All opposed? Same sign. Motion passes two to nothing, and we will have these seasonal weight limits in place. Item Number Six on our agenda is the Resolution 2025-18, Setting Permanent Weight Limits on Specific Roads Under the Jurisdiction of Lewis &amp; Clark County. And Mr. Horn will present this.
Thank you, Chair Payne, Commissioner Hunt-Housen. Once again, for the record, Kevin Horn, Lewis &amp; Clark County Public Works Operation Manager. Before you today is Resolution 2025-18 for Permanent Weight Limit Restrictions on Specific Hard Surface Roads within the jurisdiction of Lewis &amp; Clark County. Permanent year-round weight limits are needed on roads that have substandard-based material and have a double shot of chip seal. These roads will not withstand normal highway loading. Normal highway loading has the potential to cause severe damage and ultimately do costly repairs. Staff has developed the resolution to protect our investment and keep roads serviceable and safe for public use. Staff has also recommends that these roads remain permanently restricted. Public notice will be provided via social media, news media, and by fax and email to our current list of contractors and heavy-hauled haulers within the county. Permanent weight restrictions will also be posted on our Lewis &amp; Clark County website. Staff recommends approval and adoption of Resolution 2025-18 for Permanent Weight Limit Restrictions on Specific Hard Surface Roads and authorize the Chair to sign.
Thank you, Kevin. Do we have any comments from the Commission?
I do not, Chair Payne.
Okay. Are there any public comments? I just have a, one comment. Now, this is year-round weight limits. This isn't just for now, when it's muddy. This is, be aware of this stuff. Do you contact the heavy haulers, and are they aware of this?
Chair Payne, very good question. Yes, we do, and they are aware. These, the permanent signs stay up year-round. These, the permanent signs stay up year-round. There is a list in your packet here. There's not a lot of them, but they're mostly the hard-surfaced ones. I will add on the permanent, as far as the permanent resolution goes, we will write a permit for essential services, things like garbage trucks, propane trucks. That's on an ongoing basis. So we definitely work with essential service people. If you can reduce a load to get to our standard of seven tons an axle, that's what we would require. We would not write a permit if we didn't have to. Most of the, most of the haulers and suppliers within the community are very aware of where our permanent roads are. And they do say concrete trucks, gravel trucks, things of that nature. They do reduce their loads to meet our requirements on these specific roads.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin. Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Is there any further commission comment? Well, then in that case, we need a motion.
Chair Payne, I'd move that we approve Resolution 2025-18 as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve Resolution 2025-18 for permanent weight limit restrictions on the specific hard-surfaced roads within the jurisdiction of Lewis and Clark County. Is there any further comment from the commission? Seeing none. All in favor of this resolution signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution, or the motion passes two to nothing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number seven on our agenda is the Amendment Number One to Grant Award between Lewis and Clark County and the Montana Department of Natural Resources and Conservation. Oh, there you are. Jennifer, it's nice to see you. So will you present this, please?
Good morning, Madam Chair Payne, Commissioner Hunt-Housen. My name is Jennifer McBroom, and I am the Water Quality Protection District Supervisor. I am here today to talk about Amendment Grant Award with DNRC with regards to the Grizzly Gulch Placer Mine Reclamation. Please see attached amended contract between Lewis and Clark County and Montana Department of Natural Resources and Conservation regarding additional time needed to complete the Grizzly Gulch Placer Mine Reclamation Project. The current grant award was approved July 11th, 2023, with the original ending date of December 31st, 2024. The amended grant award before you will extend the grant period to December 31st, 2026. The maximum amount under this grant stays at $292,611. The services not completed outlined in scope of work will continue for construction management, construction implementation, and monitoring. The reason for the extended continued services in order to complete the Grizzly Gulch project due to the adjustments to the project plans, taking into account the available resources, external economic factors, and extending the monitoring portion of the project, an extension of the grant period was necessary. A little background of the Grizzly Gulch project. DNRC funding is for the Grizzly Gulch Reclamation Project that is in the process of reclaiming the Pretty Girl Placer Mine located approximately five miles up Grizzly Gulch. The site has an extensive mining history dating back to the 1870s. Mining activities mostly for gold have obliterated Grizzly Creek and disturbed approximately four acres of floodplain. Materials have been displaced, and the site contains several deep-open pits. These pits and unstable embankments have disrupted the surface water and groundwater flows through Grizzly Gulch, as well as created unsafe conditions for the public along Grizzly Gulch Drive. The overarching goal of this project is to reclaim Grizzly Creek to a functional stream and floodplain and to improve the safety for the public that use Grizzly Gulch Drive. Impacts to natural resources center on water quality and quantity associated with the disrupted hydraulic conditions. Water quality is impacted through erosion of steep, exfoliate soils and increased sedimentation. The project is on track to reclaim the mine by establishing a functional floodplain slope to restore natural surface and groundwater flows. The floodplain will include a constructed stream channel through diverse riparian vegetation to address water quality impacts, impacts to the public, focus on the public's safety hazards to vehicular and pedestrian traffic along Grizzly Gulch Drive. The project will address the steep slopes along the county road to improve safety for vehicular and pedestrian traffic. The project will allow public access to the reclaimed mine and restore stream corridor with a new trail. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the commission?
She beat me to it. I think she saw me coming after all these years. I was going to ask for the background, of course, and she gave it. So thank you very much for that.
That's it?
That is it. I was going to ask for the story a little bit.
Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Let's have a motion.
Chair Payne, I'd move that we approve Amendment Number One to Grant, the Grant Award between Lewis and Clark County and the Montana Department of Natural Resources and Conservation as presented by Jennifer McBroom.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the Amendment Number One to Grant Award between Lewis and Clark County and the Montana Department of Natural Resources and Conservation. Is there any further commission comment? Seeing none. Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Let's vote on this. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? It's been approved on a two to one, or two to nothing vote to approve the Amendment Number One as presented by Jennifer McBroom. Thank you. I have a question regarding procedure. The first one says it's to be signed in DocuSign. Is this something I have to do with the computer?
Yes.
Yes, okay. I have figured out how to sign these. But the DocuSign ones still caused me some heartburn, but we'll figure it out. Agenda item number eight, Grant Award between Lewis and Clark County and the Montana Department of Environmental Quality as presented by Ms. Mc-
Good morning, Madam Chair Payne, Commissioner Hunt-Housen. My name is Jennifer McBroom, and I am the Water Quality Protection District Supervisor. I am going to talk a little bit more about the Grizzly Gulch Project and the funding. Please see attached Grant Award between Lewis and Clark County and Montana Department of Environmental Quality, Hard Rock Mining Bureau, regarding the Grizzly Gulch Placer Mine Reclamation Project. The grant award is in the amount of $10,000 from a forfeited reclamation bond from a previous landowner to reclaim the mining disturbances at the Pretty Girl Placer Mine located in Grizzly Gulch. This is a little background about the bond forfeiture. DEQ accepted a small, minor exclusion statement from landowner back in 2004 to operate a placer mine operation at the Pretty Girl Placer Mine on landowner's private property. This agreement included reclamation requirements for landowner to salvage and protect all soil materials for use in the reclamation of the site at the conclusion of mining activities and to reclaim the site. DEQ required the landowner-operator to post the statutory maximum reclamation bond in the amount of $10,000. Ultimately, in 2018, DEQ revoked the small, minor exclusion statement, which in turn forfeited the reclamation bond due to the landowner-operator failure, the landowner-operator at that time, failure to reclaim the site. The county, working with the new current landowner, continued the proposal to reclaim the site and applied for additional funding to do so. Once the Grizzly Gulch Project is complete and work is approved by DEQ, the county will then be reimbursed the $10,000 reclamation bond. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Any questions?
Chair Payne, I think well explained. Thank you. And an opportunity, I guess, to put a little more resource toward the project and make sure that it's done right. So thank you for pursuing this.
I have a little problem with the math. And I'm sure it has to do with, I didn't hear you right, or I didn't understand. The amount of the contract, according to this memo, is $20,628. And I believe at one point you said there was an amount of $10,000, and, but the first amount was 2,000. Was it, can you? What are the two amounts that we're talking about?
Madam Chair, Mr. Hunt-Housen, the two amounts that I've brought up so far is the original contract total is $292,611. This DEQ forfeiture bond of $10,000 will be applied in addition to that to reclaim the Pretty Girl Placer Mine site. Did I, I'm sorry, did I answer your question?
I think, so they put up a little over $200,000 to begin with.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Hunt-Housen? No, the, sorry. The, so the timeline for all this, we applied for a planning grant, and then we applied for a implementation grant through DNRC. We applied, the county applied for that grant in the amount of $292,000. That was, that's the money that we have to reclaim the-
To do the actual-
Correct.
Work, okay?
There is a reclamation forfeiture bond on the side that is an additional pot of money that we'll be able to use in addition to the $292,611 grant to help reclaim the Pretty Girl Placer Mine. So we just have an additional pot of money to add on to the $292,000.
So on the front of the memo, there is an amount that is $20,628.
That, Commissioner Payne, that will be my next little memo.
Did I get ahead of myself here?
You did.
This is not easy, you know. I just get confused. Thank you for your patience. Okay, cleared that up. Is there any public comment? Is there any further comment from the commission? Did we have a motion?
Chair Payne, I'd move that we approve the Grant Award between Lewis and Clark County and Montana Department of Environmental Quality. It's presented by Jennifer McBroom.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve this grant amount as presented by Jennifer McBroom. All in favor of, whoop, do I have to do public comment again?
No.
Oh, okay. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Seeing none. The motion passes two to nothing. Thank you. Oh, here we are. Item number nine on our agenda is a contract between Lewis and Clark County and Respec Company LLC as presented by Ms. McBroom.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioner Hunt-Housen. My name is Jennifer McBroom, and I am the Supervisor for the Water Quality Protection District. I have in front of you a renewed contract between Lewis and Clark County and Respec Company LLC regarding the Grizzly Gulch Project. Please see attached renewed contract between Lewis and Clark County and Respec Company LLC, referred to as Consultant, regarding the Grizzly Gulch Placer Mine Reclamation Project. Under this contract, the consultant will continue to complete and perform the scope of services that is laid out in Exhibit A. This renewed agreement includes additional services to complete the reclamation work associated with the Grizzly Gulch Placer Mine, such as design updates and plan coordination, technical oversight and field inspections, and construction management services. The amount of the contract is $20,628 with the schedule of billing rates outlined in Exhibit B. The contract will end December 31st, 2025, and Exhibit C is stating the consultant will comply with all applicable laws. And the reason for extending the continued services, the Department of Natural Resources and Conservation, DNRC, grant funding the implementation of the project was prepared in 2019. Construction costs serving as the basis for the grant have increased significantly compared to current values due to inflation. Since the grant budget was not flexible, consultant worked to value-engineering the project to ensure the conditions of the grant could be fulfilled with the available funding. Consultant prepared to, consultant prepared and updated construction cost estimate and developed bid alternatives to allow the county to prioritize contracted bid items that fit the budget and strategize alternative methods to those remaining. The process involved a collaborative effort with the landowner, the county, and DNRC to determine preferences and priorities. This increased coordination included additional meetings, discussions, and adjustments to the project plans to balance the project's objectives with the available resources and external economic factors. This unforeseen circumstance required the consultant to focus additional effort on the development of the bid package and contract documents, the construction bidding process, and contractor selection and contracting, which has ultimately delayed the start of the project and required, which is required an extension. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Ms. McBroom. Any questions from the commission?
Chair Payne, just a comment. You're welcome to respond if you want. But what this speaks to me, if you just boil it down, is perseverance, flexibility, adaptability, and trying to stay on it as conditions have changed on the ground and in our environment in terms of a pandemic and all of the things that have happened, landowner changes, rule changes, all of those kinds of things. It has been a time sucker, and we've gotten further down the road. And so conditions on the ground have changed, and thus we must be flexible and change. And so I appreciate you staying with it. It could have been easy along the way to say, geez, we're just not going to be able to get this done. But we've persevered, and I appreciate you and your team and the folks that, from our partner agencies that are working hard to make sure that this reclamation actually gets done. And it looks like we're going to, we're going to be there this year. So thank you very much. I'm happy to support.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Hunt-Housen, thank you.
Is there any public comment? Yes. There's a public person coming up.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioner. For the record, I'm Casey Hayes. I'm the purchasing officer for Lewis and Clark County. Just quickly, would like to address a Scrivener's error that was found after the consultant signed the contract. We're asking or requesting that the chair make a correction to Section 12, wherein the word contractor appears and change it to consultant. The consultant has consented to the change. And I think the chair's experience within, working within contract law would allow her to understand that one would be stricken, whereas the other one would be added, underscored and initialed.
Just to make sure I'm understanding what you're saying, I'm looking at Paragraph 12.
Correct.
Compliance with laws, and it starts out using the term consultant, as it should appropriately. And then in the very final sentence, it says contractor shall also comply. And we don't have anybody that is a contractor. And so with my official blue pen, I will now, with your approval? Do I have to get approval to do this? Seems like the right thing to do.
That's correct.
I will draw a line through contractor, initial it, and it should be consultant.
Madam Chair, that's correct.
There. Any objection? Thank you. Is there any public comment about- Is there any public comment about this?
One more. Madam Chair, Commissioner, I would just like to commend on the record the consultant for working through this process with the county. They have been diligent in their efforts in maintaining their role and duty inside of this project while we've been working with the state agencies in order to amend funding, et cetera. They have not gotten off of this. The contract expired. We've worked through the renewal process. I understand in my interactions with the private sector that they contract a lot more quickly than we do in government, and they should be commended for their patience.
Thank you for that comment, and I certainly agree. It's not easy doing business with a governmental entity. Okay, is there any, is there any public comment as to this matter? Seeing none, can we have a motion?
Chair Payne, I'd move that we approve the contract between Lewis and Clark County and Respec Company LLC with recognition of the Scrivener error correction.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the, this renewed contract between Lewis and Clark County and Respec Company LLC regarding the Grizzly Gulch project. All in favor of that motion? Oop, is there any further comment? I almost forgot. Okay, in that case, all in favor of this motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify same sign. Motion passes two to nothing, so, thank you. And now, to the fun part. Item number 10 on our agenda is regarding subdivision improvements agreement extension request for amended plat of Lot 4P-A of the First Amendment of, excuse me, Heron Creek Subdivision Phases 1, 2, and 3, otherwise known as the Heron Creek Major Subdivision Phases 4, 5, and 6. The applicant is Sussex Development Incorporated, and our world famous planner, Greg McCallie, will be presenting this.
Chair Payne, Commissioner Hunt-Housen, I just received word from the applicant. He's on his way. I know he's not present right now, but he's going to be here in like a minute. I bet he'll be speaking, right, as I'm speaking?
Okay.
So, if you'd like, you could, I could certainly continue on, or?
I think it would be good to just take a five-minute break.
That sounds fantastic.
I mean, this is, we're not doing this in a rush. We don't want anybody to think we're trying to do it when he's not here. So, we will take a five-minute break, waiting the appearance of, of the applicant. I believe we are all present and accounted for. Let's bring this, this meeting back to order. We are at number 10 on our agenda, subdivision improvements agreement extension request for amended plat of Lot 4P-A of the First Amendment of Heron Creek Subdivision Phases 1, 2, and 3, otherwise known as the Heron Creek Major Subdivision Phases 4, 5, and 6. The applicant is Sussex Development, and he, a representative of that company is here, and this will be presented by our friendly planner, Greg McCallie. Greg, go for it.
Good morning, Chair Payne, Commissioner. The applicant, Mr. Ron Barch, has requested an extension of the subdivision improvements agreement for Phases 4, 5, and 6 of the Heron Creek project. As noted in your item description, Phases 4, 5, and 6 of this subdivision were approved and recorded with the clerk record on February 15, 2022. The approval included a subdivision improvements agreement, which guaranteed the expansion of the public wastewater treatment system and the application of a chip seal, asphalt seal coat to the roads within the phases of that particular subdivision. The application of the chip seal has been completed, but the public wastewater treatment system improvements remain incomplete. The applicant has indicated in their extension request application that the wastewater treatment system is 67% complete, and the current SIA provides a financial guarantee to fund completion of the system. Heron Creek is approximately 70% built out, and the current wastewater flow does not yet justify expansion or completion of the wastewater treatment system. So, staff has provided you an agreement for your consideration, which would extend this subdivision improvements agreement out till February 8, 2026. There has been a letter of credit provided to financially guarantee this agreement in the amount of $574,137.50. It will expire on March 8, 2026. So, essentially, that gives us one more year for the applicant to complete this project. Commissioners, I do have some slides I can show you. This project is the Heron Creek subdivision. It is located adjacent to Ames Lane, just to the east of Ames Lane, and just to the south of Cure Lane. This is just north of Candy Ferry Road. Commissioners, this is an aerial photograph from 2013. Subdivision looks quite a bit different today because there's been quite a few homes built on the property, but this is just right after the roads were roughed in to this particular project. This project is a six-phase subdivision, and you can see the layout of the lots within this subdivision. And as I noted, the improvements agreement relates to the final three phases, Phases 4, 5, and 6. Again, this was approved on February 15, 2022, and it has been extended previously back in '23 and in '24. We do have the estimated cost prepared by an engineer, and again, the letter of credit is for 125% of those estimated costs. And again, we're just talking about the remaining improvements for the public wastewater treatment system. And commissioners, I do have the plat itself for Phases 4, 5, and 6. These are the lots involved here. And there are several pages to this plat, but that show these lots on a little closer up if you have any further questions. But I'm available if you have any questions, and the applicant, Mr. Barch, is here too.
Thank you, Greg. Is there any questions from the commission?
Chair Payne, maybe, hold my question till after Mr. Barch has an opportunity.
I forgot item number four. If the applicant is present, we waited for you so you could be here to answer our questions. So, Mr. Barch, would you come forward and lay some wisdom on the commission?
Thank you very much. Good morning, commissioners. Thank you so much for waiting. I'm sorry that it took, I was a bit tardy getting here, but I appreciate you hearing this today. So, yeah, let me give you a quick update. Since we, we have roughly about 70 houses that are out there, I think there's about another five or so that are under construction at the moment. So, we are getting to this tipping point where the final phases of the waste treatment facility, there is a basic decision point that's going to be coming here pretty soon, and my engineers are working on that, is, in order to do the next phase, it had to, this is a seven, there's seven sections to the waste treatment. It was designed as a modular system, and waste treatment is such that if you have too much treatment, then it doesn't treat. It's like too big, if it's too small, then it doesn't treat, so it has to be Goldilocks. And we're kind of in this Goldilocks moment right now, and then, it's going to be fairly soon where we'll, there'll be a tipping point where we see then the next expansion and eventual completion of the system. So, that's kind of where we're at, and that was anticipated from the, from the beginning. That's why we didn't install everything from day one. My engineers are working right now at DEQ, DNRC, on getting the final phases of this completed. There's, there's a lot of science behind this, so, they're actually, probably will perfect this system, meaning, it all gets put in exactly as it originally was planned, or it actually might be reduced a little bit in size, just because of that science that goes into the waste treatment part of this. So, that's kind of where we're at. Everything else is completed, barring, who knows what happens with the economy this year, but we have been ticking along on this project fairly well, and we intend to continue to do so. So, if you have any questions to that, I'm glad to answer them.
As long as you're standing there.
Yes.
Do you have a question, Andy?
Chair Payne-
Go for it.
I was just going to say thank you, because I'm glad that he spoke first, because essentially, I was going to kind of have him describe the system, because I remember it just as you just described, as kind of an as-needed add-on, and as, as the treatment is required and needed, the modular system would be added on to. So, this is just, I think, our, our previous, your previous estimates for when it was needed were best guess, and now, we're kind of there, so this extension is warranted from my perspective. And I think that we're, we're partners in this after it's been approved. We want to see it completed as, as do you. I'm sure it's been a long go here, but I guess the only question I would have is, are timelines now, you feel like they're pretty realistic, or do you think we'll be back here a year or so from now?
Yeah, I would say it's probably a 90% chance it'll be finished up this next year, and the reason why I say that, again, this is more science. If the systems aren't on, if it doesn't reach that capacity levels, I can't, it's not a trigger point to then put the next pot in there. There's three left to put in, so it might be the state where we have maybe two of them installed, and maybe not the final. I just, my crystal ball isn't as clear as I wish it was. The second thing I do want to actually, just comment, I forgot to mention this, is that the system has and has, continues to be in DEQ groundwater compliance with DEQ. We continue to do that process, and I forgot to mention that to you. But, yeah, back to the crystal ball, as long as we meet those parameters, we intend on finishing it. I would also state, we have a really strong HOA, which I'm really proud of. Those folks are doing really well out there. They're taking care of all their systems, not just their waste treatment, but also their fire protection, all their common area. Also, we've been partnering really well with the county and with your, with, we have a chunk of this, remember, became county parkland, and between the RID and that partnership, I actually met with the homeowner group. We met with county officials down in your, I'm trying to remember what their actual title is, but down in your facilities management, and they're working really well with how those RID funds are being spent and things like that. So, good news is that I think we have a really strong community that's working well with you guys and vice versa.
Thank you, Chair Payne.
Just to help me better understand what's going on-
Sure.
Can you show on the map, or have Greg show on the map, which phases have been developed and actually have houses generating effluent?
Sure, we actually, probably, you better throw up a Google map and show you where it looks like today.
Okay.
So, pretty much all of it. So, we currently have, so the first three phases, which are on this map, are not highlighted individually as that section. Those are 100% built up. Those are done.
With houses, with people living in them.
Houses, people, paying taxes, the whole bit.
Flushing toilets.
Exactly. And then, so the next phases that you see on Phase, all the rest of these, oh, again, you have, you know, roughly a third or two-thirds total, there's, like I said, about 70, 75 units. There's 109 total in the project, so, you know, quite a few of those have homes on them right now, but not all. Still working through it. And then, of course, the outer perimeter, that's where all the parkland, that was back when we, when we completed Phase 1 and 3. We had already completed all those elements, so all those elements, the trails, all that stuff was, has been in existence, continues to be, and continues to be under that maintenance as well, the HOA and the RID for the county.
It's great. It's, you know, I really appreciate you being here and giving us an update as to your progress, and, and it's, as you said, it's, it's always sort of, is it going to work? Is it, oh, no, we got to come up with Plan Q or whatever. So, it's an interesting and necessary project. Okay, so, we talked about the applicant, and now, does the commission have any further questions of the applicant?
I do not, Madam Chair.
Neither do I. Let's let the public come forward. Do we have any public comment? We have a very bashful public today. I will close the public comment at this point, and I'm supposed to ask if we have any further questions after the public comment, but the public comment was kind of limited. So, is there any further thing the applicant should tell us about that we may not have asked? Nothing?
I'm sorry, I go first.
Okay, thank you. If there's no more questions from the commission, I believe we should probably have a motion.
Chair Payne, being that you read the full title into the record already, I will say, I will make a motion to approve the subdivision improvements agreement extension as presented.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the subdivision improvement agreement extension request for the amended plat of Lot 4P-A of the First Amendment of Heron Creek Subdivision Phases 1, 2, and 3, otherwise known as the Heron Creek Major Subdivision Phases 4, 5, and 6, as recommended by staff. Is there any further discussion?
Good luck. Get her down.
Okay. Let's, let's see, it's been moved and seconded. Now, we can vote. All those in favor of the motion to approve this amended subdivision indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes two to nothing, and we hope you get out there and provide more housing for our citizens. We have come to the point in this minute, in this meeting, where I am supposed to ask for public comment on any public matter within the jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda above. Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.